Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 10th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. This is a regular meeting. We're holding it via Zoom due to the pandemic that we're facing. And I'm going to start off with just doing a quick roll call. Michelle Williams.
Yeah.
Thomas Fitting is absent, I believe.
Yes.
Richard Gordon.
Yeah.
Nicole Davidson.
Here.
Mary Salvatore.
Here.
And myself, I'm Kirk Scott. I'm here. Do we have any of the alternates present?
No.
Okay, we have a quorum anyway, right?
Yes.
So I think we can continue on. We got a big agenda tonight, so let's just jump in. A few ground rules. If everybody could please remember to mute their mics whenever they're not speaking. The board members and staff will have their mics unmuted. And as required by executive order, everyone must state their name and where they are from prior to speaking. During public delegations, all ads will be open for comment. Please wait to be called on by the chairman to speak. And once you finish speaking, please mute your microphone. And during each agenda item, only the board, staff, and presenters will be unmuted. Only one person is permitted to speak at a time, and board members will be called upon to provide comment via roll call. Members and alternates for motions. In the interest of making sure we have a clear record, please plan on roll call votes so that Sue can take the minutes. Let's see. Only hosts are permitted to share the screen. And this entire meeting is automatically recorded by Zoom. Okay, so moving on to additions to the agenda, I'm showing that we have none. Is that still correct?
Yes, far as I know.
Thank you. Public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters. Issues or concerns related to approved wetland permits or in-house proposals or general topics of discussion are are open to comment. That part always, is that a typo? Should that say?
It's a typo. It should say planning or subdivision, yeah.
Okay, and they should be not open to comment during the public delegations, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Agenda items, referrals, applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing or in litigation may not be discussed. The members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments during delegations. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to speak during public delegations?
Don't see any hands up.
Okay.
Give everybody just a minute if anybody wants to send a chat and let me know that they want to comment. I think most people are probably here for some of our public hearings.
Yeah. Okay.
Nope.
I think that's. Okay, let's move along then. Reports, communications, I am showing none received. That's true. Did we have a zoning meeting recent, recently? Was there?
Yes. Yes, Thursday.
Thank you, Nicole. Would you, were you in attendance today?
Yes.
Would you care to give a little synopsis of that?
Yes, they, PAS and Construction presented a site plan application for the Affordable Housing Development located off of North Bride Brook Road, an 80-unit apartment complex for affordable housing. It was originally 288 units. They scaled it down to 80, including six handicap units. The public hearing is being kept open until November 19th. So there was no decision made. And the other issue was stop and shop. They've trimmed the trees on the border of I-95 a little bit too much. So the zoning commission has sent a cease and desist order. And they're willing to go as far as litigation if necessary to enforce their written promise to stop trimming the tree border. That was it.
Thank you. Thank you for attending that. Let's move on to Ex officio. Mr. Salerno, do you have anything that you would like to share with us?
Good evening, everyone. Two, two quick items. We want to Steve Grant, you may have seen in the paper, to do some improvements at the landfill. Gary could probably give more details than I could on that at this point. And we had a kickoff meeting yesterday with no instructions for the public safety building. That was today. So construction should be starting very soon. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno. Planning Director, Ms. Gashel.
I have nothing at this time in lieu of the long agenda. I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Subcommittee's, there's a bullet here for the POCD Steering Committee. Do we want to do, address that later?
Yeah, let's just skip till the public hearing.
That sounds, sounds like a good, good, good idea. All right, and which comes to my portion as chairman. The only thing that I would like to say is I'd like to see a copy of the bylaws. If somebody could find that for me, Gary or Jen, the bylaws for the planning commission. And also, I would still like to try to get some training for our commission members, just to give us some background on what our legal mandate is and what, what, what our tasking is, just as a, like a refresher and a orientation kind of thing for the newer members. Acceptance of the meeting minutes. We have two different sets of meeting minutes. One is from October 6th, 2020, the regular meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion? Or would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 6th.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, I don't know who won there.
I'll give it in the count, no.
Okay, thank you, Nicole, for seconding that. Any further discussion or corrections? Okay. All in favor, well, let me, let me do the roll call, so I don't miss anybody again. Michelle Williams.
I.
Richard Gordon. We'll go back to Richard. Nicole Davidson.
I.
Mary Salvatore.
Jane.
Was it, that was an I?
No, I wasn't there, so abstain.
Oh, abstain. Okay, thank you. And myself, I. Richard, are you?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, let the record show. Is that four, four, one, or five, one? Five, four, one abstain.
Four, one.
Four, one.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one. And the motion carries, and we are accepting the meeting minutes. That brings us to the meeting minutes from the 27th of October, the special meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
I will move to approve the special meeting minutes of October 27th, Michelle Williams.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I hear a second?
I'll second those meetings, that meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing no discussion, Michelle Williams.
I.
Hi, okay. Richard Gordon.
Hi.
Nicole Davidson.
Hi.
Mary Salvatore.
Hi.
Kirk Scott. Hi. Let the record show that the meeting minutes passed unanimously. Was it six, zero, zero?
Five.
Five, zero, zero?
Yeah.
You guys are keeping me honest. I gotta go back and learn how to count, I think. All right, so that brings us back to the meat of the agenda. Which is continuation of application of Kristin T. Clark PE for English Harbor Asset Management LLC owner applicant for it would be a three-lot subdivision, right?
Initially, it was an application for a four-lot subdivision of approximately 3.8 acres. It's now since been reduced to a three lot.
Okay, so, so we'll want to make that correction here on the meeting minutes. Application for three-lot subdivision.
Well, I would note, Mr. Chair, for the record, that it was an application for a four-lot subdivision. Through the process of review, it's been reduced. So I would still keep, keep the title because that's what was noticed.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
3.8 acres of land zoned RE40 located at 22 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive, East Lime Assessor's Map 4, 40.0 Lot 22 and 23. We have a series of new exhibits I saw today. Mr. Gashel, if you would.
We have Exhibit RR was a letter from the applicant to myself in response to Exhibit PP, the letter of Barbara Johnston. Exhibit SS, the Ledge Light Review of November 9th, 2020. Exhibit TT, the applicant's maintenance agreement for the common driveway dated November 10th, 2020. And I believe the applicant is here. Ms. Lindo also has indicated there were three additional items that came in late this afternoon that are not in our notes. Ms. Lindo, if you would mind letting us know what those are.
I have Exhibit UU, which is the applicant's letter to Ledge Light regarding their letter of November 9th. Exhibit VB, which is the revised site plan, which was updated in response to the septic review. And Exhibit WW, which is granting the extension to the next regular meeting of the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, so. Um, which brings us to brief comments by the applicant. Mr. Garrity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Appreciate, I know this has been a long road. I think we're getting close, but I wanted to just address briefly two items. The first is which my client had submitted a letter dated November 8th, 2020. I believe that's Exhibit RR regarding the open space. There was some question, I think, previously by one of the members of the public who submitted a letter. Barbara Johnson, wondering what the whether any of the open space was being used as part of the subdivision. I think I needed to get it at the last meeting. It was not. And in fact, someone had been added to it. And on November 8th, she submitted a letter with a copy of the site plan showing exactly what land is going to the East Lime Land Trust as part of a separate transaction. And just as a matter, not of concern for this application, but I did receive confirmation from Department of Environmental Protection Thursday that the grant application had been approved and the Nissan Land Trust assigned the necessary documents. It's going to the Attorney General's Office. So we're hoping to see that close relatively soon. And as I indicated, not sure what meeting it was a while back, but the assignment of the conservation easement, I am still holding on to pursuant to the escrow agreement, and that will be provided to the land trust when that transfer actually occurs. Secondly, with regard to that, the, my client submitted a letter dated November 11th, 2020. I think that today is the 10th, so I think it's actually just a typo on that, but it was submitted today in response to the Ledge Light comments. And I have to, this is nothing in terms of reflection on the commission or necessarily Ms. Holmes, but frankly, on Ledge Light. I have to voice some frustration with the process and how long it has taken them to deal with this. As you may recall, at the last meeting, we were waiting on Ledge Light. We had done test pits and some additional information. We had submitted new plans to them on the 20th. I sent a electronic copy on the 21st. Then subsequent to that, I made numerous attempts to, through email and phone conversations, to get hold of Ms. Holmes to speak with her as to any issues she may have had. The first I heard from her in regard to any of that was the email that was sent yesterday to myself and to Mr. Gashel and Ms. Lindo at 4:40, 4:58 regarding a partial approval of Lot 19, and approval of Lot 19, and then some requested revisions to Lots 23 and 21. And what's frustrating is these were relatively minor adjustments that had to be made, which my client did this morning in about an hour and resubmitted plans electronically this afternoon, along with a letter, which I'll go through in a moment regarding that. But I have to express my frustration with Ledge Light because I don't think they're providing the town, frankly, with what town it contracted for. And that is a full-time sanitarian. My sense from having dealt with them both in East Lime and some of the other towns is that those towns that are supposed to have full-time sanitarians, these people are doing double duty for, for other towns. So from an applicant's standpoint, particularly mine, considering it created a tremendous amount of stress today trying to get many of these things resolved. I find it frustrating. As I indicated in, we, we had, on the October 27th meeting, we had contacted her. We haven't, we do have a meeting set up for Thursday with Ms. Holmes. I did hear back from her this afternoon. But I think what's indicative of how insignificant, if we had this information three or four days ago, we could have had final plans and presumably an approval from Ledge Light for you tonight, so we could close out this hearing. Because I think, as you know, everybody knows, COVID and extensions and so forth. It's been significantly longer than it probably needs to be, but that is, it is what it is. But the fact that we were able to respond in such a short period of time, I think, is indicative of the fact that most of these changes relatively minor. And the information was already in possession of all parties. So if we needed to move the septic system, which is what she's asking us to do, everybody had the information to do that, and that was done today. So those plans are there. And it was a rather simple response on that. I'm looking at my notes because I make sure I don't miss anything. But you know, as I indicated in there, or I've indicated previously, the, this client's predecessor has had a long history with Ledge Light and Town of East Lime Sanitarian before that. So it makes it very, very difficult for my client to believe that it's not symptomatic of something larger going on. And you know, I'm trying to just steer this project through, and I hope that we can get there after we meet with Ms. Holmes on Thursday. But it is something that troubles my client and troubles me on some level as well, too.
Mr. Garrity, what, what is it that you want us to do? We understand that you're frustrated, but this is not anything that we have ourselves had our hand in. So I appreciate the fact that you're frustrated with this, and I think there's a lot of that going around. But I think the other thing that I would like to mention is we don't generally get these applications without having those reviews committed beforehand. So there's that. And I just think we should, we should try to move forward. I understand your frustration, but there's not anything that we can do about it.
No, I just, I just want the record to reflect it where we're at. And I understand, and I understand the commission's role in this, too. And I'm not, I don't want to belabor it with you, so I'll move on at that point.
Thank you.
What I want to do is just briefly summarize the letter that Ms. Clark wrote. She's the professional engineer to Danielle earlier today. And it, as to the existing Lot 21, on page three of the plan, page three and four of the plans, the system was relocated. There was a question as to what the design was that had previously been submitted, but it's the GST plans. And that's outlined in the letter to Ms. Holmes that we were doing it. The driveway was relocated somewhat in order to I should point out, Ms. Ms. Clark is also the, one of, a member of my client. She's the manager of English Harbor Asset Management. So the driveway was relocated closer to the boundary line in order to accommodate septic system in the well design. The well arcs were relocated. There's been an adjustment in one of the property lines to allow one of the septic systems to be moved in, in, on Lot 23. So we added some area to that to address some of her concerns. And page four and five reflect the tank, size of the tank, and that it's a geometric product GST. And as I noted, we relocated the boundary line. So hopefully on Thursday, when I meet with Ms. Holmes, we can go through this, make sure that we are all both on the same page. And then ideally, at your next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll have approvals of the remaining two lots. And then we can close this public hearing and move forward. And I, again, I, I don't mean to belabor the point or, or bore the commission with it, but I feel the need to make the record clear on the process and move forward from there.
Okay, thank you. So.
Thank you.
Gary, where does that put us on our schedule for this? I know we, we had some time due to the COVID extension. Is that still, can you help?
That's still applicable. So based on, I reviewed my calculations today. We opened the public hearing on July 27th. So when I do the math, it was supposed to open on May 7th. We ended up opening again, like I said, July 27th. And so in total, the application was we ended up using approximately 78 days of what I would call statutory COVID or executive order time. That would leave 12 days there. We opened the public hearing on the 27th, would have closed on September 30th, within the 35 days. But we were granted extension times from the applicant to continue that public hearing. Based on the, where we're at, it, we need to close this by December 4th. And there is approximately 35 days left. I would say there's roughly 12 days of COVID time. And the remainder is statutory time that the applicant may grant. So prior to the meeting, and as you saw, one of the exhibit items, they're consenting to an extension of time to our next regular scheduled meeting, which is December 1st. Theoretically, we could go all the way out until February 19th if we had to.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question. Mr. Gashel, when you say out the February 19th, you mean for decision-making?
Correct. That, that's, we have to close the hearing by December 4th. That will be all out of time, extension. And then you add 65 days to render a decision. That would bring you to February. And again, I don't.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that, that's pretty much what, what you wanted to talk about, Mr. Garrity, for now?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we are still allowing members of the public to speak. But before we get to that, do any of the members of the commission have any comments or questions that they would like to bring to the record? The only thing that I would like to see is if you made some adjustments to those plans, I wouldn't mind just having a look at it for completeness if or if that's premature.
We'll, we'll have, they're, they're there today. I was just, I was told.
Hooked it to the website. They're, they're on the website.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I corresponded with Mr. Garrity by email today and just indicated that while they were received, staff would have to review to just make sure that it's still compliant with the regs, based on the minor changes that he's indicated. So we would just take a look at that, make sure that the movement of that lot line didn't upset anything. And I don't suspect it did. But like I said, we just received them today, so staff will review it.
Hard to review. Yeah, it would take a little time to review. So, so that'll go through the town engineer or just yourself in, or, or?
We'll refer back to the town engineer, the zoning official, and myself.
Okay, so that would definitely be, we would have some comment from them by their next regular meeting.
Or no comment.
Or no comment, okay.
Because there'd be no change, if there was no change in what they needed to review, it's still held as it does today, you know, as it did in the last iteration of the plan, then yeah, they may say no, no further comment.
Okay, so, so, I mean, okay. Does, is, nobody from the commission has any further questions or comments? Ms. Lindo, do you see anyone that is in the online that would like to address the commission?
Um, I don't see anybody at the moment that is asking to speak. I do have two people that are logged in by phone. Barbara, did you have something to say about this application?
I did. Barbara Johnston. Basically, I thank you for all taking so much concern on this re-subdivision, I believe it is. But with the plans I saw reviewed today, is there an additional part of acreage for 37 acres because of the change of this losing the one lot and from four down to three? I'm a bit confused with that myself. Can you explain it or somebody, please?
Mr. Chairman, if you want me to.
Yes, please.
Originally, we were proposing adding about an additional half acre from this parcel to the land going to the East Lime Land Trust. But due to some of the design changes, we are no longer capable of doing that.
Okay, so in the plans that I reviewed, there was 37 acres to the East Lime Land Trust. Am I correct?
Yes.
Oh, what was the original before there was a plan change?
It originally was 37, then it was going to be about a half acre out of this proposed subdivision. But as a result of the plan changes, we're no longer going to add that to the 37 acres that is going to the land trust.
Well, that's wonderful. I didn't know that. So thank you very much for taking the time. And I thought a letter was to be read by a person, or maybe the attorney from Wyoming in the letters that I reviewed today. Is that letter of his or her to be read?
That is a letter, that's a letter from Ms. Clark, and I briefly summarized that a little bit earlier. That's the November 8th letter that shows the 37, it's actually 37.9 when I look at the map, that's going to the land trust. And it just shows a map of, or survey map of what is going to the East Line Land Trust.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And you'll hold that until everything is completed, Gary, if that's who I'm speaking to. Is that right?
Barbara, you were speaking to the, the commission, but I'm here. So yeah, that's being, as Mr. Gary said, he's, that's being held, is still being held by him, correct? Or the, the assignment of easement is still being held until this all closes and completes, if I understand that correctly.
Correct. The assignment of the easement is being held until such, that's what we agreed with the commission. We're holding that until we make the transfer to the land trust.
Well, thank you very much for all the efforts.
Can I get an address, an address for Ms. Johnston?
35 Sequest Avenue, Niantic.
Thank you.
Sorry. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address the commission? Okay, so hearing, hearing none, I think we are going to move on. Do we need a motion to table this, Gary, from a procedural?
I would just recommend you make a motion to extend the public hearing to our next regular scheduled meeting, scheduled for December 1st, 2020.
Okay, I'm looking, looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to, what was the date?
December 1st, 2020.
December 1st, 2020.
Awesome, in motion. I submit a motion to extend this public hearing until there are next monthly meeting on December 1st, 2020.
Mr. Gordon, do I hear a second?
I'll second, Michelle Williams.
Thank you, Michelle. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move to vote. Michelle Williams.
I.
Richard Gordon.
Hi.
Aye.
Nicole Davidson.
Aye.
Davidson, sorry. Mary Salvatore.
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. Let the record show, the motion carries to continue this to our regular meeting on December 1st.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that brings us to our next item on the agenda. Application of Carroll York owner, application for one lot subdivision of approximately 1.4 acres of land zoned RU12, and a request for waivers from sections 7-2-1, 6-12-2, 6-8, 5-2-2, CII, and 5-6 on the property located at 92 Old Black Point Road, East Lime Assessors map. 08.3 Lot 132. Mr. Geishel, if you would, review, review the exhibits, please.
Certainly. Exhibit A, we have the application of Carroll York for a one lot subdivision at 92 Old Black Point Road. Exhibit B, subdivision plans for Carroll York for 92 Old Black Point Road dated September 5th, 2020. Exhibit C, the letter to the applicant from Sarah Sportman, PhD, Office of the State Archaeology. Exhibit D, memo from the town engineer, Victor Benny, dated October 29th, 2020. Exhibit E is a staff review from zoning official Bill Mulholland. Exhibit F are the letter of, the abutter's letter. Exhibit G is legal ad to the day and the town clerk. Exhibit H is proof of mailing for, to the abutters. Exhibit I, the sign posting. Exhibit J is revised subdivision player prepared for Carroll York and 92 Old Black Point Road dated September 25th, 2020, revised to November 9th, 2020. Exhibit K is a memo from the town engineer of revised plans dated November 9th, 2020. That is all we have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Geishel. And with that, let's move to the presentation from the applicant.
We have both Ms. York and Mr. Fanner are here tonight.
I don't know who wants to start.
I got Robert Fanner from J. Robert Fanner Associates, 37 Grand Street, Niantic. The proposed subdivision located on Old Black Point Road is for two new lots. One of the lots is an existing home that has been there for a long time. And then we're proposing to do a lot that is actually located to the rear of the property, behind the existing house. That would be the new lot. If you look on the plans, probably sheet two is easiest sheet to look at. We do have a 50-foot right-of-way that runs along the southern border of our property. We do have deeded access easement as well as to install utilities. All the utilities for the new proposed home in the rear of the property will access driveway. There's actually a shared driveway there now to another lot on the other side of the right-of-way. So we'll actually branch off of their driveway and continue to our lot rear. The zoning commission did approve our waiver. We had to ask them for the waiver for the frontage. And they did approve that waiver to not have any frontage for this lot. The only caveat was they did ask us to have a 25-foot easement on the existing house lot, which we have provided, which is a shaded area you see on the map there. We will not use that area. We will access off the property that's actually owned by Black Point Association to access our lot. This lot originally was actually cut out of all that same land. Our original owner of the property, which was Mr. Redding, owned a large chunk of land here, and he divided it up. He donated some to the Black Point Association. It's actually not the old Black Point that we all think of. It's just a, I think, a separate organization that it was put into. But he did reserve those rights for these lots that he owned at the time. We'll be accessing through that. The existing house, which is a lot located in the front, is conforming, will meet the setbacks, especially since the land we're cutting off was to the rear. Property is serviced by both town water and city sewer. So we do not have any septic system issues or water issues here. We have constructed a rain garden located to the rear of parcel B, off to the side of the driveway to meet the drainage requirements. Sorry, I was thrown for a loop when that came up on the screen. The, uh, the plans were reviewed by Victor Benny, the town engineer. He has approved that the rain garden that we have provided there does meet the letter of the regulation. We did ask for the waiver for the full-blown drainage, but we still have to meet certain requirements to make the town engineer happy, which I believe we do. We do have a clean letter from Mr. Benny, not sure which exhibit that was, but it was a letter from dated yesterday. So the, so the lot in the front is basically a frontage lot. And then we basically have a true rear lot that does not own any actual frontage on the town road, being Old Black Point Road. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has anything. Again, we do have the waivers that we have requested. And we're seeking those waivers to receive.
Can we get a, which of these attachments is the, is the list of waivers? I'd like to go through those.
Sure.
Gary, I think it's attached to the application, which is Exhibit A.
Yeah.
Right there.
You, you want me to go over them, or?
I just wanted to kind of look at, look at real, really quick.
I did have a question for the applicant, Mr. Chair.
Oh, please.
I am noticing in the record, we haven't gotten back a response from the water sewer department as the new home is going to be served by both water and sewer. Have you had any opportunity to have any discussion with them? I, I have not, unfortunately.
So I, I haven't had any talk to them, but I don't typically, we're certainly in the sewer shed, we're allowed access to sewer. I don't usually get a, a pull-up letter for them unless we're doing shared connections or something like that, that's not as of right. There was a comment from Victor Benny in there, just that, you know, the work that we do when we do do our sewer tap and stuff would obviously require a permit and bonding and stuff from the town. But that's done, that's done at the time of construction, not at the permitting of a subdivision.
In that regard, though, I do believe we still need a report based on section 5-4 of the regs. When the subdivision is to be served by municipal sanitary and sewer, a report detailing the design, discharge volume, and nature of wastewater, and a special pretreatment system anticipated, as well as a description and plan of the sewer connection location, any proposed sewer collection system extensions, et cetera. A letter from the Water Sewer Commission shall be provided noting review of the proposed sanitary system. So I will double check when I get tomorrow, or in this case, we're closed, but Thursday, I can check with water and sewer the, where they're at with their review, because I do believe we referred it to them.
Is, is that, is that something that needs to be addressed before we can move forward?
I would say it needs to be addressed before we close the public hearing. It was similar to the previous application that we just saw, where we're leaving the public hearing open for the Ledge Light Health District to comment. In that regard, it could be construed that comments from those Ledge Light and/or water sewer would be considered staff comment and could be taken upon, you know, after the close of the public hearing in that, if, if looked at in that, that regard. I mean, in any case, we have 35 days to conduct this hearing, so certainly we have ample time to, to address that issue.
Mr. Mr. Geishel, for the benefit of the newer members of the commission, can, can we talk just a little bit about what our requirement is regarding waivers? And, you know, under what circumstances we would be able to grant waivers and what the requirements are for granting a waiver? Is that something we can?
Absolutely, I'm, uh, just gonna pull up that section of the regs. Section 4-12. So the applicant, as you can see, has submitted their request in writing, which is required. And the granting of waivers, as the reg says, shall not be granted unless the commission finds the following conditions are met. One, the waiver has been requested in writing by the applicant in the application submission. The property for which the waiver is sought is affected by conditions which affect the property and are not generally applicable to other land in the area. Physical features of the property or its location cause exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship in meeting the requirements of the regulations. The granting of a waiver will not have a significantly adverse effect upon adjacent property, the environment, or the public health and safety. Five, the granting of the waiver will not be in conflict with the plan of conservation and development. Six, where it's proposed to vary any engineering standard contained in these regulations, a report from the town engineer has been requested and considered by the commission. And seven, requested waiver is the minimum deviation from the requirements of these regulations necessary to permit subdivision of subject land. Granting a waiver, the commission shall state upon its record the reasons for granting any waiver.
I've seen, Ms. Williams, you have some comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to dive into the stormwater management waiver real quick to clarify for myself. And I'm wondering, well, a couple things. So I am guessing from the map and from the initial walkthrough of the site plan, this is not subject to inland wetland, it's far enough away from, from that water body, the, the Patagonia there, or?
Okay, that is a tidal wetland, so it's not an inland wetland.
Okay, and so that would go through zoning?
What, what's the question, I?
Like, I, I, that question was for Gary. So I have two questions. I have a question about the stormwater management, but then in looking at the map, I also kind of have a question of who governs that water body that, given the proximity.
We do, so under, because it would be in, within, I believe, the coastal area management, and it requires site plan review. So as part of the subdivision, we do that. And I believe in section five, there's a coastal area management, site plan review. If it's within the coastal boundary, the narrative of the coastal area management site review in accordance with section 5-7, these regulations must be submitted. I'm not, I don't believe that in this application.
Okay.
It may be. I don't see a separate narrative for that, but I, it would be a mistake. We would need to obtain that narrative.
A narrative for what, Gary?
I believe you're within the coastal area management, aren't, aren't you within that coastal boundary?
We are, but with residential homes, any home over 100 feet from the wetlands boundary is, a waiver is, it's, it's a wave. Residential homes that are not within 100 feet of the coastal water body do not have to apply for a CAM. Unless the house is within 100.
Do, do you know where that requirement is? Cause I don't know.
It's in the zoning regulations, under the CAM.
But we have, we have subdivision regs that govern CAM. We have a separate requirement there whenever you're subdividing land.
This is good, because this is the question that I was getting to.
5-7 coastal area management, site plan review. CAM is required for all subdivision within the coastal boundary of the town of East Line in accordance with section 22A-105 through 22A-109 of the general statutes. All applicants, for all applicants for subdivisions located within the coastal boundary shall file the commission 10 copies of coastal site plan application on such form prescribed by the commission. And then they has a 5-7, one has a bunch of criteria that go with it. I'd take a look at that, but we can certainly do that and get that into the record between now and our next regular scheduled meeting.
Thank you for walking me through that, Gary, and that was connected to my question about stormwater management here. So in looking at the six, section 6-8 of the subdivision regulations when it comes to stormwater management, I'm wondering what i-if, if the applicant did meet with the town engineer prior to the application, which he just covered, he did. Does that meet the requirement? Is a, is a, is adding the rain garden at the request of the town engineer? Does that satisfy this section of the regulations? Or are there additional things that would ordinarily be required that, that the request is to waive?
I, I guess I, are you asking if the engineer's review satisfies this? Meaning, is he, I mean, his, I believe his letter indicates that it's not going to exacerbate downstream flooding. We can ask him for clarification, if you'd like.
Well, I was wondering about the, if the waiver was necessary, because the, the way I'm interpreting the regulations.
Yes, he has to ask for it, because it's waivers in our regulations, if I go back to that section, they're, they're only allowed where we specifically indicate throughout the regs that they're allowed to waive that.
So a rain garden does not, uh, does not constitute a stormwater management system in this case?
It would. I believe it would. If, if you read, uh, it, because it's going to attenuate some flow.
Right.
So it, that would be the, I mean, it's not a full-blown engineered system. But I think it's anticipated that the rain garden is sufficient in size and area to handle the additional runoff from the house. The newly constructed house. The proposed driveway is gravel, so most of that will infiltrate over time, that'll get compacted, and some of that will run off. But it looks like, you know, that would run off into the shoulders and most likely be overland flow and infiltrate there. It's not a significant amount on a gravel drive. So I think the town engineer is reviewing it in that light, saying for a single-family house, for only one, a rain garden should be sufficient. If, if there's more that you want to see done, I, I guess in that regard, I can ask the town engineer to either clarify his comment, or we can ask the applicant to, you know, beef up that storm, that rain garden and make it more of a, a basin.
Yeah, for me, I'm not sure that that's a concern at this time. It was more procedural question, because the way the regulations read to me, a rain garden, if created and reviewed with the town engineer, seems like to the regulations, it, it may satisfy as a stormwater management system. But I just wanted to clarify that with you, so thank you for addressing that.
I would say we've, and similarly in past applications, we've accepted that as a means of attenuating stormwater. For these lots of divisions.
If I, if I could just comment, Gary, the, the, the regulation for the drainage, if you read through, is very extensive on all the calculations you must do and all of the different criteria that have to be met. The problem with drainage and drainage calculations, it's very much meant for a very large scale. So when they wrote these regulations, they put a caveat in there for very small subdivisions and stuff. And it, it's actually something that they did build into the regulations, that if you have small subdivisions, you don't have to meet the full letter of those drainage regulations. You meet as many as you can, and literally to the point it says to satisfy the town engineer.
Right, that's why I was wondering if you even needed the waiver.
Yeah, we still need the waiver, but we still have to meet that minimum requirement, but we're not meeting the whole, so.
Okay.
We need half a waiver, but if you need any waiver, you get the whole waiver.
Got it. Got it.
I guess I don't know if you all have looked at Victor's comments. I would just note that comment two indicates that the drainage summary meets the overall intent of the stormwater management. Section six dash eight of the subdivision regulations, the applicant has stated that the proposed rain garden will address water quality and the minimal increase in impervious surface will not cause any downstream flooding. Item three, he did recommend a $3,000 bond for public improvements and general site restoration. My understanding is there really are no public improvements being proposed other than the apron to get into the site. Is that correct, Mr. Fanner?
Correct.
So I would say the $3,000 would be more applicable to erosion and sedimentation control, just site stabilization.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission regarding this?
We have quite a few people from the public, so I'm going to go one at a time. I do see a hand up for Holly. Do you want to go ahead?
Yep, thank you. This is Holly Magna. I'm abutting property at eighty-eight Old Black Point Road. My property line abuts Carol's on the south side of mine. So I guess a couple concerns is what are the provisions for the decrease in privacy and scenic views for abutting in nearby properties? Change in character of the nearby properties, increase in density of structures, potential decrease in value of surrounding properties. One of the, in section seven of the open spaces easement, these, I believe it's seven dash two, the protect, it's line L, as in Laura, protects steep slopes to control soil erosion and water runoff as well as maintaining, maintaining, excuse me, scenic views of and from areas such as bluffs, ridges, riverways, et cetera. We'd like some clarification on the provisions for that. And then in set seven, section seven dash two dash one, I know that that was one of the waivers. But it seems that in seven two, line L sort of comes under that, so. You know, we'd like to know what the provisions are, or a few of us would like to know what the provisions are for that.
I don't know what provisions, the density, we're adding one house to a parcel, so very minimal density increase. The lots are more than triple the size they need to be for the zone. So we're very much in harmony with the neighborhood and what we're allowed as of a right to do with our land. As far as changing views and stuff, we're not actually proposing to change any views. The property, as you can see on the map, there is actually a field. There are some wooded areas on the perimeters. We actually do not propose to even remove those wooded areas. We do have to remove a small part of the wooded area on the right of way. That's about a five or 10-foot area. But it's certainly not going to change the character of anything in that area.
My concern, I guess, is in the regulations, section seven, in the general, seven dash two, there, line L, protecting steep slopes, et cetera.
We don't have any.
Maintaining scenic views of and from areas such as bluffs, ridges, and river and waterways regarding abutting properties is what I'm saying, is obstructing views of a few properties that overlook that area. It's a concern of blocking a few of the neighbors' views. It looks like, Ken, you might have your hand up.
Yep, we're going to go one at a time for public comment, though, because we're taking minutes here. So it's one person talks, then we'll go on.
Okay, so just to close up, just a concern of a few abutting neighbors or surrounding neighbors within the 200 feet have concerns about, you know, a structure or the proposed house blocking neighbors' views and, you know, privacy issues. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I speak also?
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carol York, ninety-two Old Black Point Road. Our backfield was solid woods. About 10 years ago or so, we cleared all the woods. So prior to us clearing the woods, none of any houses in question had any view at all anyway. So if anything, we created the view that they now have. So just wanted to toss that out there.
And to be clear, you own the house that you're splitting off the property in the back of it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, had you needed to comment?
I was just going to remind the chair just to make sure that comments are addressed to the commission. Let's get all the public comment first and then let the applicant rebut. I think that would be better, getting the back and forth.
I see your hand, but I do have someone that raised a hand before you, so I'm going to let them speak first. That was Rachel Black. Go ahead, Rachel.
Hi, hi, this is Rachel Black, a neighbor at one hundred Old Black Point Road. I had some concerns about this subdivision because of the historic nature of the home that's currently on the front property. And I do think that this will affect the character of that home, having another building, another home right behind it. I also have another concern, which is that this does raise density, even though it is within the allowed zoning. And I think it sets a precedent within the neighborhood, and I do fear that this will have negative impacts on existing property values.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Kenneth. You have to unmute yourself first, Ken.
And also please state your name and address for the record.
There you go. Okay, sorry. Having technical difficulties here. Actually, this is Rick Scavato, co-owner.
Hi, Ken.
Eighty-two Old Black Point Road. So with regards to the views, we do actually have a beautiful view, especially in the winter, right across that field, right from the front of our property. And I believe with proposed host locations for that lot is right in front of that view, probably totally blocked that view at this point. And I do agree with the, an additional home over there would change the general feel of the property in this area. Because we all have like an acre and a half each, or two acres, and it's just, everybody's fairly well separated. There's a lot of privacy. So looking out my front window, I look at a field today. Looking out my front window later, I'd be looking at a house and I wouldn't have my, you know, and the water view would be gone. So I just wanted to bring that up.
And in addition to just looking at a field in the winter.
State your name and address for the record again.
Thank you. In the wintertime, when the leaves are down, we have a clear view of water out across that field. Obviously, you know, that's wintertime and it's very limited, but during the summer and at all times from the front yard of our property, if you step out of the home, we have a clear view across that property, right over, actually, Carol, your house at this point in time. I would suggest that my concern really is, my personal concern is really more about the location of the structure as opposed to the fact that the structure is there. And obviously, the fact that the structure is there, to Holly's point, is going to affect the general aesthetics of the neighborhood. But the technical perspective of it is that depending on the location of the structure, it will obstruct view. And maybe we can, you know, discuss that with you, Carol, or with the commissioner, whatever, once that comes through. But I think in general, that's really what I'm more concerned about, is how that structure is going to change what we see once it's built.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission tonight?
I'm going to, there are a few people here that are on the phone, so I see Barbara, did you have something to contribute?
Yes, I do. Barbara Johnston, thirty-five Seacrest Avenue. I would really like to see a CAM report done on this. I'm not happy with a hundred feet given apparently by the person that spoke. And basically, I would like to know also who the adjoining property people were. I did hear some people speaking, but I'm also heard Black Point Association, which I am a member of, and I'm not aware of how far their property line goes. Or did somebody say in the very beginning of this hearing that this was adjoining a Black Point Association property? Can somebody help me out there, please, too?
I think there's a different.
Gary, you're muted, Gary, but you may want to respond to that to correct the question.
Just to clarify, the abutting property has a 50-foot strip of land that has frontage on Old Black Point Road. It's approximately 23 acres and extends and has frontage. Another strip of 50-foot of frontage, I think it's Marion, is Marion Drive, or I forget, on the other side in Black Point. At any rate, Barbara, that piece is owned by the Old Black Point Associates, not the association. So it's a 23-acre parcel that is vacant and could be developed sometime in the future.
Well, that's what I'm questioning, if this is Gary that I'm speaking to. Old Black Point Association or Black Point Associates is what you're saying?
Associates owns the property. The Black Point Association that has their own zoning commission does not own this land.
So basically, without the waiver and of the water in the sewer, I would appreciate very much if you could table this until more investigation is done with this water and sewer waiver, too. I understand it was stated it was in the sewer shed. But basically, I really thought it as one lot. I don't know where these 23 acres now apparently adjoining it or shared for this lot. I don't know. I would like more time and have it extended the public hearing.
If I could jump in here, I don't know where the 23 acres, it must be a different piece of property. This piece of property we're talking about is not that.
Correct. The 23 acres is an adjacent parcel. It abuts the rear of the subject property that we're discussing?
See, that's new to me. Sorry, I don't know if I'm still able to speak or not, but that's all new to me. I did not review it today because I figured it as one lot. But there are 23 acres probably undeveloped. I don't know.
The 23 acres is not this application. It's not what we're, it's in a abutting parcel. It's not this property.
I understand that, sir, very clearly. But if you're going to get a waiver for a water and sewer, it should only be for one lot. But you don't have even a waiver from the water and sewer department yet.
They're not requesting a waiver from the water and sewer department? They're providing water and sewer to the lot?
I'm asking for a waiver then from the water and sewer because that would leave the 23 acres open for development.
Okay, I'm confused, Barbara.
Well, I am too.
Is not part of this application, it's just adjacent to the parcel. The parcel being developed, they're proposing to provide public water and sewer to it from Old Black Point Road. That's all. There's no request for a waiver there. We would just ask the Water and Sewer Commission or the department to say is they can connect if there's any issue there. I don't believe it is. They already pay an assessment. I, so I'm not, I don't foresee one, but for the record, we would ask that the water sewer department at least provide some sort of correspondence back to us just to verify it.
And what about a CAM report?
We've already asked the applicant and pointed that out, and as we noted, we have ample time to continue the public hearing.
That would be fine.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission this evening?
Hold on, I have another person on the phone that I want to ask if they wanted to speak. This is a two-two-seven-three-three-three-nine number.
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you.
I did see another hand go up there, too.
Yep. Go ahead, Henry.
Yes, hi, my name is Henry Cates. I live at eighty-six Old Black Point Road. One of the neighbors, but not a direct abutter. I, I think, just listening to the other neighbors' comments, I just want to reiterate particularly my neighbors across the way, Rick and Ken, and the view issue for us. You know, one of the questions I would have, because I really can't tell from the plans, is where the structure would be located, how high the structure would be. Certainly, if the structure is going to be high, it's going to, and I don't know exactly how many feet, but certainly if it's built up, it's definitely going to obstruct views of other neighbors. And I believe that is a criteria that the commission has to consider in granting this waiver. So I'm certainly open as a good neighbor to working with the applicant and making sure that, you know, the applicant isn't deprived of any of her rights as a property owner. But again, as a neighbor and as a group of neighbors, I think we, you know, we should have a little bit of say in how the structure can be located on the property.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission?
Hold on. Go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I should have jumped in at the same time. My name is Janet Knox, I'm co-owner with Henry. In addition to the community of the concerns that were raised, there is also a new house that was on the, facing the water beyond the left side of the property, a three-story house that was just built also on a knoll of the hill. So with two new structures, I would want to get some more information if the environmental studies and the impact studies were done when that house existed, because I think having that house in addition to the new proposed house might have more of an erosion effect on the land with runoff. I don't know when the studies were done prior to that or after it was built.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that wish to speak tonight? Commission members, do you have any questions or comments? Gary, I have a question for you. Generally speaking, when these applications come forward and the plot plans are laid out and the, you know, houses are located on the property, that is in itself what the design is going to be. Is that true, or is that?
That's typically true. It's a conceptual design. It's typically the That's typically true. It's a conceptual design. It's typically the Land Surveyor will pick a twenty by thirty or thirty by sixty rectangle and plop it on the plan to show that they can fit that size of a house. At least there's enough area for it. The actual design will be dictated at the time building permit is made. An application for a building permit is made.
Right, so we have no way of knowing what?
What we can consider in that, though, is the house's orientation relative to solar gain. That is within our regulations and, you know, we can ask the applicant to, you know, address that. Obviously, that's, again, which way do you face and point the house? Is the side with the most windows, proper roof overhang? That is all going to really occur when the building permit is applied for. The only, you know, other suggestion, I mean, it is possible if the commission is of the mind to continue the public hearing for some of this additional information. The commission could, if they so chose, could do a site walk as well. Plenty of commission has done that in the past, not frequently, but if it feels it's necessary. Just putting that out there for you. That would be a special meeting and we would have to coordinate a time to do that. Again, site walks are literally for orientation only. And discussion of the substance of the application cannot be had during those walks. I would note that the house that was currently being constructed behind the existing pump station, two parcels down. That was an existing lot of record, is my understanding. It was an existing building lot. So when that lot was approved, I'm uncertain whether or not a cam review was ever done or not. I don't know. I don't know the history of the lot. What I do know is that it was an existing building lot. And just applied for a building permit and zoning. That's all I have.
Ms. Williams, you had a question or comment, please?
Yeah, I would just just wanted to express that I'd be keen to leaving the public hearing open so that we can, in the meantime, receive the comments towards regulations in section five dash seven about the CAM as they apply to subdivisions, knowing that zoning has their own CAM as well, which Bob walked us through. And then also to get the letter from Water and Sewer indicating that they do intend to serve the property if they do as assumed.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I also have some concerns about the waiver requests as well and I'll be I'll be looking a little more deeply into the waivers, generally speaking, to see if if the requests meet the requirements that are listed in the in the regulations. Any other commission members have any comments or questions that they would like to have on the record? So it sounded almost like you made a motion there.
I will go ahead and make that motion that we continue this public hearing to our net. I will stop that motion and.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Chairman, do you have some concerns that you could tell me about the waivers now? So if it's something I can address?
As I'm looking, as I'm looking at that section that talks about the waivers, okay? And I just I just reread it for my own. My own.
Section four twelve?
Yeah, section four twelve. And it says we we shall not grant a waiver unless it finds the following conditions are met. There are seven conditions there. Okay. The one in writing, we have the request in writing. There's one here that says like, property for which the waiver sought is affected by conditions which affect the property that are not generally applicable to other lands in the area. I feel like that, well, I have concerns about that one. Whether or not this is piece of property that you're looking to develop is has some condition that makes it different than the other pieces of land over there. I have some questions about that one. Physical features of the property or location cause exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship in meeting requirements of the regulations. I don't know. I have to think about that one a little bit more. Granting of the waiver will not have a significantly adverse effect upon adjacent property, the environment or the public health. We are still, that one. We're waiting for a CAM letter, I guess, CAM CAM report and some. So that's something that I would like to see. I don't think that this is in conflict with the P O C D, at least not that I could tell directly. I don't know. And six and seven.
I would say six is addressed by the town engineer's comment.
Yep. And probably are at the minimum deviation of the requirements, but I do have some concerns about. You know, it says shall not grant a waiver unless it finds the conditions are met. So at this point, I'm still not convinced. So.
So it sounds like, Mr. Chair, you're looking for clarification on?
I would like to know how how this piece of property is different from the pieces of property next to it, which would require it to get a waiver. And I would also like to know how this, there is an unusual hardship in meeting the requirements of these regulations. Those two are ones that I'm not, I'm not seeing right now. So if if we want to table this till next time, that would that would be okay with me. Unless anybody else has anything that they would like to say this evening.
And look, Mr. Chair, Mr. Savatini?
I'm just, I apologize for the for the late arrival of this comment or request. I realize we're just about ready to close here. I would like, as I understand it, the applicant is intent on building a single-family home on this property and granted, the footprint is unknown at this time based off of just, you know, conjecture. But can you, can someone comment on how that relates to zoning and relative to the possibility of it expanding or even how it relates to multifamily and what we might expect? I mean, I just don't want to be stuck looking at, you know, a multifamily structure, three or four, whatever, if that's possible. I don't know what the zoning is for that.
Mr. Gashel, can you remind us what the zoning requirement is, please?
The underlying zone is R twelve. So based on that, you could have a minimum of twelve thousand square foot lot. I believe based on the land area here, we could yield probably four to possibly five additional lots. They're asking for one. I think based on the orientation of that lot, I guess, to explain zoning-wise, the building envelope, they have building setbacks from the side and rear yards. Those would still have to be adhered to. They are R twelve setbacks. So they're a lot closer than, say, the R forty, which has a thirty or forty setback from a property line. These are, I believe, ten and, I have to go to Jen.
Thirty and ten.
Thirty from the street, ten from the side and rear. So in that context, if they were to put additional homes in there to maximize the yield, you'd be looking at those closer setbacks, obviously, right? So here, you have those setbacks, so it does provide more flexibility in where the location of that house goes because you have a ten-foot rear and side yard. Obviously, they have to stay thirty feet off of their front yard, which would be the rear rear lot line of the existing home. All right, thank you.
And I also have one one further question. This is like one point three acre subdivision is the new lot? Is that what I'm reading, Mr. Gashel?
It was.
Point nine.
Thirty-nine thousand square feet, point nine acres.
Point nine acres and the minimum building lot size for houses there?
Twelve thousand square feet.
So potentially, it could be.
You could get three point seven lots on the back. And then the front lot, parcel A, is twenty-two thousand square feet. So if you took the rear portion of that, you could take twelve thousand off of that and get a definitely a fourth. Could you squeeze a fifth? I don't know. And it's all on water and sewer. So in that regard, they, and, you know, potentially, they could be serving up to five, four to five homes versus the one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so it's the the public hearing portion is still open. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
It's kind of seventeen, I'll just kind of respond to Gary. So considering your discussion about the breakup of how they could put multiple structures or multiple homes on there. If there was one in the middle of that where Carol or the applicant has got it proposed, would that interrupt the ability for additional homes to be built there? Because just because of the variant or the offset, I guess you're calling?
I would say most likely. I can't definitively say that because at any point in time in the future, someone might be able to scroll in another house. You know, you, so based on where that location of the home is on the map, that pretty much takes up the majority of the lot. I mean, it's right smack dab in the middle. I don't know that you'd want to sprinkle houses around that, but if it's possible. So I don't want to say it's impossible. I can't.
All right, thank you.
Kirk, I do have Barbara Johnston, I think, who wants to speak again.
Yes, please, Ms. Johnson.
I think. Barbara, did you have something more to contribute?
Well, she could, she can, if she's not able to speak tonight, we'll maybe have continuing to December first. So if she lost her connection or something.
Barbara, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed.
Whoever I'm addressing, I'm sorry, I'm talking on a phone. I don't have it on a screen or anything.
Yes, please go ahead.
I would like the hearing definitely postponed till the next meeting or so because of the R twelve zoning. I urge you to see how close houses can be in an R twelve zone. Just take a ride to Black Point and maybe not along the water, but they are multiple lots joined together. So in this factor or in this space, I, as Gary had already offered you to tell you the information, R twelve is than an R forty. And R twelve is basically houses very close together that could be fit on this lot, maybe four or five, as Gary has stated. I haven't figured out exactly how many you could figure, but I do live in an R twelve. And I really don't think those people that were speaking, and I appreciate them speaking. Myself, I'm just a private person, but then on the harbor management. And this CAM study really should be done because there could be other problems in the head. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. Jen, are you seeing any other people that are interested in speaking tonight?
Mr. Fanner would like to.
I would just like to add that there's been an awful lot of talk tonight about things you can do, things that could be done, things on other pieces of property. We have an application and we have a proposal, and that's what we should be discussing. I would just like us to try to stay on topic. We're not here to talk about zoning regulations. We're here to talk about our applications. That's all I have.
Okay, so I think I think that was it.
Carol, did you want to contribute?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate one thing, just so there's clarification, that I'm asking for one house on almost one acre. When Gary's right, someone else, I could sell the house on the one point four acres to a developer who could come with a proposal for four or five houses back there. That's not what I'm looking for. I want one house on almost one acre. And by me getting an approval to do that does not open it up for me to add three or four more houses. If anyone ever wanted to do that, they would come back for another re-subdivision. That is not, giving me this approval doesn't open up anything for me to add, you know, a whole subdivision back there of multiple homes. So I just wanted to really clarify that, although by zoning, someone could come and request a four-lot subdivision. I'm asking for one.
Thank you. For that, that's a good point. Okay. Are we? Is there anyone else, Jen?
I don't, I don't have any raised hands, so I'm gonna say no.
Can I make one more, just one more point?
Yes, please.
Just if you wouldn't mind just reiterating, if we extend this to December first, exactly what is it that you're looking for? Because I really thought that we had a very complete application. So exactly just, and Bob may know what it is that he needs to prepare for next time. But if we can have it very clear exactly what it is you're going to be looking for from us so that we can have it all set to go for December first, if you do need to continue this. Because as I said, we, you know, we went to the pre-application meeting, thought we had every duck in a row. And now it looks like it may get continued to December first, but I just would like to know exactly what it is you need from us that you're delaying for.
Let me answer that.
Yes, if you would, Gary.
So under section five dash seven of the regulations, coastal area management CAM site plan review. So we have a site plan, then there's some criteria there, five dash seven one through five dash seven four that have to be applied to that review. So we want to make sure that the site plan that we have meets that criteria. And so I would look to see to receive something that that explains how this plan, it does in fact do that. We also have a form, I believe we use the same one as zoning, that would have to get filled out. That we provide for CAM review.
I think we were looking for a letter from the.
Letter from Water and Sewer, just to verify that they're on board with the connection. I don't really foresee that to be an issue. And then maybe a narrative or a description on how the application would meet the criteria for the waivers being requested. And I think based on that, it seemed like the criteria is one through four in particular on section four dash seven. We can address those. I think that was it.
Then I've been, I've been relying on you to be our eyes and ears to see if there's anyone else. Is there?
I do not see anybody else. I don't have any other hands up.
Okay.
If you want to. I think you're good.
Okay. Okay, so I think now I might be ready to call for a motion.
I'm Michelle.
Okay, my big moment. Um, I, I'd like to move to continue the public hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting of December 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Mary, thank you very much. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, hearing no discussion, let's move to a vote. I'm gonna vote by roll call here. Uh, Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Richard Gordon.
Aye.
Nicole Davidson.
Aye.
Mary Salvatore.
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. Uh, let the record show that we're going to continue this public hearing to December 1st during our regular scheduled planning meeting. Which brings us to let's see, oh.
Kirk, can I suggest that maybe we take a five-minute break?
I was just gonna say, because we got, yeah, we've got, we've got some very exciting stuff that we want to get to next. And, um, I appreciate everybody hanging in there. This is, uh, this is gonna be really good coming up. So well, let's, let's get back. And, uh, let's say eight thirty-six. Five minutes, is that enough? Anybody feel like, okay, all right, eight thirty-six, we'll be reconvening. Thank you. All right, thanks, everybody for sticking around and hanging in. Um, let's see, old business, Town of Eastline, 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development Update. Let's see, we are having a public hearing for that. And, uh, Michelle, would you like to take over and?
I think we're gonna have.
Yeah, I think Gary's gonna read a few things into the record first. Yeah.
Okay, great.
You're all set, Gary.
Okay, all right. So we have, uh, Exhibit A, which is a legal ad. It was published in the October 29th and November 6, 2020 additions of the day paper. Um, I'd like me to read it. As follows, the site planning commission will hold a public hearing on November 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via Zoom virtual meeting. Meeting instructions below to consider the following, A, the Town of Eastline, 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development Update. And B, application of Carol York owner application for one lot subdivision, approximately 1.4 acres of land zone R-12 in request for waivers from section seven dash two dash one, six dash twelve dash two, six dash eight, five dash two dash two CII, and five dash six on property located at 920 Black Point Road, Eastline Census Map, zero point, zero eight point three, Lot 132. And Zoom meeting instructions, well. Okay, that was Exhibit A. Exhibit B, uh, was a referral response from, uh, the DEEP dated September 5th, 2020. Exhibit C was the Board of Selectments, September 30th, 2020 special meeting minutes. Exhibit D is the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments' response dated today, November 10th, 2020. And we have also the Planning Commission, uh, October 6th, 20, oh, those are the original, never mind. And that, that is all the exhibits for this, sorry. No.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll take it away with just a quick introduction. I know we've been talking about this plan for a very long time. So just wanted to start by thanking again the members of our subcommittee. Um, Peter Lynch, who was served on the subcommittee in 2019 while he was, uh, serving his term on the planning commission. And then, uh, the current members, Kirk, uh, Rosemary Osfeld, who's on this call, Rich Gordon, Larry Fitzgerald, and Norm Peck. So, um, I just wanted to review a couple of quick things, no less, no more than five minutes. Uh, we started, uh, this mandatory once every 10 years update in February of 2019, when the subcommittee was formed. At that time, we started going through, uh, the 2009 P O C D kind of line by line to see what had been done, uh, what was still to come, what was relevant, what was irrelevant. We reached out to a number of, um, experts in the various areas to come start talking, uh, at our monthly meetings, um, to fill us in on what we may have missed over the last 10 years. And then we really got going full speed ahead at the end of 2019. Uh, we sent out invitations to each town department, board and commission, and then several community stakeholder groups, inviting them to a stakeholder kickoff session where we went through a, uh, timeline of our update of the document and asked for their feedback. At that time, we also began a community questionnaire, which was distributed online on the town hall website, as well as on a number of the community Facebook groups. Postcards were handed out by Rosemary and Kirk at the first selectmen's debate in October of 2019, and then again on Election Day, 2019. We received over 500 responses from that community questionnaire. And then in January, we held a public forum, uh, the minutes of which are available online, where we had a number of people, uh, come into the town hall in kind of a public hearing style, but with a little bit less formality to just give us their open-ended, uh, feedback. What, what is important to you about the plan of conservation and development? Uh, and, and how do you recommend we proceed? Uh, so that was, uh, a lot of our methodology. We leaned on subject area experts. We leaned on students, uh, environmental science students at Wesleyan University, thanks to Dr. Osfeld. And, um, we took a great deal of effort to make sure that we were making this process as open as possible to the community. And I'm, I'm really proud of, uh, the way that we accomplished that in bringing in a lot of different people and a lot of viewpoints, uh, at the, you know, right at the start of the process. Um, and doing it on a zero-dollar budget. As we've discussed a few times here, uh, most other towns, uh, many other towns, when they are going through this process, set aside 10 to, uh, we've seen up to $205,000 spent, um, hiring firms to assist with this process because logistically it is a big lift. It's a very heavy lift. And, uh, the members of the subcommittee and all of the community stakeholders and town staff and other members of boards and commissions really came together and stepped up and, and did a great deal of work to get this document, uh, completed. And not just completed, but completed thoughtfully. So, um, I just wanted to say a special shout out and thanks for that. Um, our document, our updated document is due to the state of Connecticut next month in order to be in line with our every 10-year update. And I know we've discussed this before too, but just a reminder that not having an up-to-date plan of conservation and development on file with the State Office of Policy Management does, uh, put us at risk for receiving, um, many, uh, different kinds of grant funding, including the steep grants that, uh, Mark Salerno mentioned in his ex officio report earlier today. So, uh, keeping an up-to-date P O C D is not only best practice and good for the town, but, um, not having one has some real, uh, penalties as well. So, uh, very happy to report that even, um, with some lost time during COVID, we were able to really double up on the meetings, maintain open Zoom meetings. I think almost every meeting, we had one or two members of the public, uh, watching in or giving us feedback. We received regular written communication from the many groups, uh, that I mentioned before, even up to this week. Um, so we really, uh, came together to complete the document on time. We did inquire about an extension due to COVID, but we were not subject, um, to the qualifications for that extension. Everything I just went over, um, is outlined in the document around page 16. You can go through the methodology, um, the timeline and our stakeholder engagement. Uh, just so that it's really upfront, but I wanted, uh, you to make sure, uh, I wanted to make sure that, um, that was covered right at the beginning. So with that, I know it is a very easy read that all of you probably just brushed through at the beach over the weekend. Um, but uh, thank you for the time tonight for us to discuss it. Thank you again to the subcommittee, to Gary, to Jen, both of you especially, uh, for uh, this big lift and very excited to present the final draft and discuss it tonight.
Thank you very much, Michelle. And, and I must say, you've done a really great job as, as chair of that committee and, um, the product here that we have is really good. And you shepherding it along, along with town staff was, uh, really well done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do, uh, I think, I think we want to open up to the public to allow the public for questions or comments.
Um, I've got Camille Alberti. Go ahead, Camille.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, great. Listen, uh, hi, everyone. This is Camille Alberti, Seven Darrow's Court. I just thought this would be a good opportunity to, um, really acknowledge the hard and important work of the planning commission and, um, especially the P O C D committee, the subcommittee, um, coming up with an updated plan for the next 10 years. I did read the entire document, um, and I just have to express my gratitude, um, for the professional management of the project and the quality of the document and the work that was performed. I mean, your team produced an excellent document, and it's one that should make you all very proud. Um, there's so many things that I liked about this document, um, particularly your cross-functional approach to making sure that there was input from town departments and boards and commission members, but especially the outreach that Michelle talked about with the community, um, questionnaire or the P O C D survey. I think it's really important to understand the residents' desires in terms of development and the character of our town, and especially the preservation of our natural resources. It's really important to get their input, and I'm just so pleased that, that you took the time and the effort to do that. Um, so again, I just really liked your recommendations in the study and your approach, and I hope that we can find a way to move forward and implement many of them. Um, one of my personal favorites that you talked about was just, uh, how you wanted to, uh, expand revenue-producing opportunities to farmers and owners of uh, large tracts of land to hopefully avoid the potential sale of their lands for residential, uh, development. That's, that's one of the ones that I really, but there's just so many things that I liked about this document. Um, so I won't belabor all of those points. Um, so I just, again, thank you. Um, I did have one question after reading the entire document. I didn't really notice any mention of tax-exempt properties, and if there were any limits in our regulation with regard to how much we would allow in town. So when I talk about tax-exempt properties, it would be, uh, schools, churches, you know, we have the military, rest to military, um, installations in town plus the jail. And just from being on the Board of Finance over the past several years, I've seen how much our pilot funds, our payment in lieu of property taxes has declined. And I'm just wondering if somebody could address if there's anything, um, that would prevent the, um, I hate to say overdevelopment, but just prevent the number of tax-exempt properties in our, in our grand list.
Oh, you want to jump in or Gary?
Yeah, I'm, if, if we're, I don't know what the official public hearing rules are on the back and forth. I can certainly address the question, but, um, looking to Jen and Gary.
There's only two, two others from the public here.
Okay.
So if they wanted to speak, they certainly could. But if you want to address that comment, we, we can.
Sure. Camille, that's a good, um, thank you for your comments, first off, and, uh, that's a very good question. Uh, we do not specifically address that in the plan. Regulations-wise, Gary would have to discuss whether or not there are existing, um, for lack of a better word, regulations or tools on the books currently that address exactly what you're discussing now, but it is not addressed, uh, by name in the plan.
And currently, we don't have any regulations on the books that would address that or manage it. Um, obviously, tax-exempt property also includes open spaces. So we run up kind of against the, you know, it's kind of like a, a double-edged sword, more open space while we can demonstrate the cost of services, right, being reduced for that open space. There's still a cost of carrying the land. The town no longer receives any revenue if it's preserved. So it, you know, I think it's a balance, and I think the, there's more of a win when it's preserved as open because the cost of services is so much significantly reduced. Um, so I think that's kind of how we've just kind of managed it. Uh, but certainly I'd be happy to take a look, um, as we get into next year and actually address that, and maybe we can incorporate a section into the document under, uh, probably land use or somewhere in the commercial residential, maybe throughout. Um, but that, that is a good point.
And just a note too, um, what Carrie just mentioned, there is precedent for that. The, the document that we're working off of is the 2009 P O C D, but it was updated in 2010, which is why we had not already hit our 10-year mark. So we can make further, um, tweaks and updates, um, and submit them to restart the 10-year clock, which is what happened in 2009. There was a, a brief addition in 2010. So, um, should we want to address something like that, that's a possibility.
Great, thank you.
You. Uh, Jen, is there some other folks ready?
Um, we have a few other people here. Rosemary, did you want to comment on anything? I know you're on the subcommittee. You're all set. Okay. Um, I have Barbara Johnston. Did you, Barbara, you're still here. So did you want to say anything on the P O C D?
I'll take that as a no.
I want to give her a minute because I know that when they have to unmute on the phone.
Oh, I see. It's hard, yeah.
It, it's a different process than what we go through.
Oh, yeah, you gotta press. I've never done that.
Now, Elizabeth Allen, your alternate is here also. Elizabeth, did you have anything you wanted to contribute? Barbara, are you there?
I am now. I hope you can hear me.
I can. Go ahead.
Okay, Barbara Johnston, 35 Seacrest Avenue. Basically, I give the group a lot of credit for it. I'm sorry, I haven't read it yet. Um, the only part of it that I did see, it's a lot of reading. Is there any way you could break it apart in some kind of form where probably people like me that haven't taken, uh, the time to read it, uh, can briefly scam it or review it in a quicker form? And could you ask for an extension to come up with something like that? It would be much easier. I understand how valuable it is, and yet again, to read all the paragraphs is pretty difficult unless you're really into that field.
I can take that question if it's okay, uh, Ms. Johnson. This is Michelle Williams, and, uh, I agree with you very much. Uh, you will find that this document, while also very long, is about 100 pages shorter than our, uh, existing P O C D. And one of the things that we did to address exactly what you're talking about, and I'm not sure, um, if this was available in the draft that you viewed, because, um, as we discussed, we've been, this has been a, a living draft that's, uh, been consistently updated to the website. But one of the ways that, um, we are trying to address, uh, your comments on the readability is by adding a recommendations matrix, which is a listing of every, it, it's a spreadsheet listing of every recommendation in the plan. So recommendations alone without the additional, uh, you know, pros. So recommendations alone without the additional, you know, pros, background that they would appear with in the plan. So it's kind of a, just a list of the recommendations. Oh, yeah, it's on the screen now. I know you probably cannot see it because you are on the phone. But I will describe to you, it is a color-coded spreadsheet of each chapter's recommendations and then the board, commission, town department, or community group that would need to be involved to implement that recommendation. It is our hope and intent that as we move forward with, you know, hopefully the adoption of this plan after the process is complete with public hearing and a vote by the Planning Commission, it is our hope that we can turn that recommendations matrix into a guided summary document so that we have exactly what you're describing, which is a way to get to the meat of the plan without spending the better part of your day reading lots of pages.
Well, that's about where I'm at.
Yep.
To read, I believe it was 100 and some odd pages.
Yep.
I could not print them out. I probably could if I had enough reams of paper or ink. But basically, something like what you're speaking of would be great. It really would be a good help for people to understand that are interested, as I am tonight with this other meeting. And that's great. Just keep it going and thanks for the work.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Jen, is there someone else ready?
No, we don't really have anybody else.
Okay, so those were some really good and useful comments. And I think one of our plans moving forward was to try to keep this committee intact in some form or another and try to keep this, you know, keep the momentum going and trying to update the things in the matrix as they're done. And Michelle, do you have any comments? Or Gary, do you have any comments that you would like to add?
Well, I can add to that. I think we, you know, we've had some discussion. Originally, we wanted to include a section that detailed out an implementation plan. That was a vision that wasn't super executed fully due to our time lost during COVID. But we did discuss that. A next, two next steps for this document would be, one, to maintain the P O C D as a standing agenda item in the regular Planning Commission meetings so that we as a group can talk about the status of the recommendations and any potential implementation. The other thing we talked about was myself and Kirk or any other members of the Planning Commission or P O C D Subcommittee or staff doing a roadshow essentially with this document to the various boards and commissions and requesting to be on their agendas for their upcoming meetings in early 2021 to just let them know that the plan has been approved and filed and go over in brief what the sections are that would apply to that board or commission so that we can start that conversation and start to build in a little bit of accountability. Not, not that we're going to micromanage other boards and commissions, but just to stay on it so that we know as the owners of the document what is happening with it over the next 10 years. And we can, you know, keep an eye. That will help us update it next time, too.
I, I agree with that. Are you, would you, would you call what you're proposing something like an implementation committee? Or would you want to say it's like an extension of the P O C D? You know, the current committee or, or what do you, what do you have in mind for that?
Well, we could discuss that as a commission, right? So this is our document and this is a Subcommittee that was then turned into a steering committee. And I'm not sure the legal difference if I'm being completely transparent. But I think that that would be a great discussion item for our January meeting potentially. It was, is to discuss, you know, now that the document has gone from ownership by the P O C D, you know, Subcommittee to the full planning adopted document, how do we want to move forward with this commission's document? Certainly, I think that myself and other members of the P O C Subcommittee who have spent two years on this would be more than willing to spend a couple more to see if these recommendations actually get to fruition. Because that would be a real bummer to work so hard on them and then walk away. But certainly, there's new people here who they want to be involved or other people as well. So I think that's a good point and something we should discuss as a group.
I think that adding, you know, and to further that discussion, I think adding the P O C D as an agenda item would be a good idea. Do we, procedurally, do we need a motion to do that? Or can we just add it to the agenda?
We just add it to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so for the record, I'd like to add that to the agenda so we can have these discussions and like make it a formal thing. And then we can talk every week or every month, we can talk about making the updates to the matrix or doing the roadshow or any of these other really great ideas that, that everybody's going to bring forward. Let's see, was there any other comments?
I just want to know if anyone had a chance to look at the comments from the COG. I will just note that they indicated that in regards to consistency with the regional P O C D. He says overall, again, this was a letter addressed to you, Mr. Chair, from Sam Alexander, Planner 3 up at the COG. He says, overall, the draft P O C D is very consistent with the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, regional P O C D adopted in 2017. He indicates in a number of areas where that consistency, I won't read them all. In regards to the state P O C D, the draft P O C D is also quite consistent with the state P O C D adopted in 2013. This section discusses commonalities between the state P O C D and the draft P O C D organized by six growth management principles. And he goes on to discuss that. So moving forward, I don't believe we will need any further correspondence when we send the document to O P M indicating there's any inconsistencies. And based on my own professional review of the document, I don't believe there are any inconsistencies with the state plan as well. With that said, I would just like to thank the Subcommittee and everyone on it, especially Michelle. I couldn't have done this without that help. It's been a tough year, as we all know. So many, many thanks. My gratitude extends to all of them. Thank you again and looking forward, just moving forward in the next 10 years.
Yeah. Thank you, Gary. And thanks to you and town staff also. I know the last couple of weeks have been a flurry of lots of activity. And even the last year has been very challenging. So thank you to town staff as well.
And in particular, on that note, Jen, in particular, thank you. She has been an immense help. She does deserve much recognition. I'm.
Thank you.
Very grateful. Thank you.
I'll just be happy when we can move this off of Jen's desk. Thank you, Michelle.
Oh, yeah.
With that, in terms of the timeline, we could leave this public hearing open until December. But come December 1, we need to close it and make a motion on this item, either approve it or do not. We think we would approve it in order to get it approved before the expiration of our P O C D on December 7. We would then have 60 days to get it to O P M. Is that correct?
Yes.
Michelle, as Chair, do you have a preference on, on what to do if you want to leave it open or close it or?
Yeah, well, I would have loved to have seen some more community members participate tonight. However, they did also have an opportunity to speak at the Board of Selectmen public hearing in September. And that was an optional public hearing, not required by state statutes that the Board of Selectmen elected to have in addition to the legally required process. So I do feel that we've had, you know, adequate time for those who are interested. I think maybe not as evident to the full commission, but the P O C D Subcommittee and staff certainly know that we've been getting quite a bit of written correspondence through the process since we submitted our first draft on August 5, which you all reviewed on August 4 to approve us sending there. Thank you. So we have been getting a number of written comments from private citizens, boards, commissions, community groups, things like that, kind of in the more offline or directly to the P O C D Subcommittee. So I'm glad that we got all of that in. And I think certainly we gained quite a bit of public feedback at the start. So I would feel comfortable closing tonight if others feel comfortable closing the public hearings.
Any other board members have an opinion that they would like to share about closing the public hearing? Yes, go ahead.
I said, that's fine with me. I can close.
Yeah. Rosemary?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think I'm okay. I mean, as, as we said, said and talked about, we have had lots of opportunities for the public to weigh in and they have. And it's been really great to hear all the, all the reviews and comments and feedback and great ideas. So I feel comfortable closing it as well. So. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I sent in a motion to close the public hearing for the P O C D.
Thank you, Rich. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mary, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move to vote. And. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Tom Spitting? Oh, sorry, Rich Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Davison?
Aye.
Mary Salvatore?
Aye.
Kirk Scott?
Aye.
Let the record show, we are closing the public hearing for the review of the 2020 P O C D. And that brings us to our next item on the agenda.
Which brings us back to the pending subdivisions. Both are tabled. So I think we can just move on to zoning referrals, which we have none. Municipal, bring us to old business, which we hit. The annual meeting schedule for 2021.
Yes, that's something we should.
We also have the Town of Eastland P O C D under Old Business because they moved to close the public hearing, but they haven't moved to adopt it.
Right.
So we're picking up under 10, is it?
Yep, under a old business.
Okay.
I don't see any harm in moving to the dot date unless, unless anybody has any other ideas.
I, I think in lieu of the, the lack or of public comment this evening, I think, like you said, we've had over a year's worth of input. The community is aware. I think we addressed the public and heard them. So at this point, I think there's nothing else to do but to move it forward.
I would agree with that. Any other comments? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Adopt.
Adopt. Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the Eastland 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development update.
So all moved, Michelle Williams.
Very fitting, Michelle. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I said, and Rich Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's move to vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Davison?
Aye.
Mary Salvatore?
Aye.
Kirk Scott?
Aye.
Let the record show that we are adopting the 2020 P O C D update for the Town of Eastland.
Congratulations. Jen wants to jump out of her chair right now.
That was a sweaty one there for a minute.
I, I thought you guys weren't going to approve it. Okay, so what else is on our agenda?
New business. We have the annual meeting scheduled for 2021. And I put on there the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget, just due to the hour. And I think I can have that prepared for our next regular scheduled meeting in December. And at least I'd like to discuss that with the commission as we prepare the budgets for the next fiscal year. And usually by December 30, we've got to get ours up to Board of Finance. So we'll, we'll discuss, we have to adopt the annual meeting schedule for 2021, 30 days prior. So December 1, it should work pretty well.
Yeah.
Adopt it then, we'll be ahead. We can have it filed with the clerk and meet in January.
Are you going to need any help from us for either that or the budget?
Well, it'd be just discussing the budget. And again, you know, because the, your, the commission's budget is co-mingled with my department's budget. It's all wrapped in there. So we would just discuss the needs of the commission and the items that would be applicable to, to the, to the agency.
Yeah, it seems like it's always a wild card because like some applications come and they require lots of extra meetings and, you know, which cut, which, which has implications for, you know, costs.
Certainly. Right. And, yeah, so we can discuss those at our next meeting. I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, great.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if we were able to just, I see that the meeting schedule is in our materials for tonight. I didn't know if it would be easier for you all if we do just address that tonight so that that's one last thing to put on December's meeting.
It's pretty straightforward, so.
Right.
All right, that's a good point, actually. And generally, you know, as a, as a comment about the, the meetings, you guys do a good job of, you know, picking the holidays. Don't do it around the election and, you know, things like that. So I, I, I would feel comfortable adopting it. We always know it's the first Tuesday. It's not a holiday and it's at 7 o'clock, so.
And it, and it follows the first Tuesday of the month.
It looks like it's the second Tuesday of the month.
It is the second Tuesday of the month.
Second Tuesday.
We're changing that. I just wonder if it fits everybody's schedule, I guess.
It seems to have worked so far.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, fine with me, I just.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, and I'm assuming town staff is happy with this because they put it together. So thank you very much for doing that. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular meeting schedule proposed here?
I sent in a motion to approve the meeting schedule as.
It's hard on Zoom, right? I second.
You're first.
Thank you, Rich, and thank you, Michelle. Any further discussion about the, the schedule? Hearing none. We'll, we'll move to vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Rich Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Davison?
Aye.
Mary Salvatore?
Aye.
Kirk Scott?
Aye.
Let the record show that we are adopting that meeting schedule. that meeting schedule. Which brings us to
Our favorite one.
Yes, our favorite one. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Rich. Do I hear a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion?
I did one bit of discussion as we adjourn and we go into December. For the 2021, just the year, calendar year, we will be electing officers again in 2021. So start thinking about that and maybe have some discussion at the next meeting. I could put it on there for, if you wanted to nominate others for chair or vice chair of such. That's all.
Okay, yeah.
For the next agenda.
On the next agenda, we, we can put, well, would that be the first of the year we would do the, the election or would it be?
I have to double check, but I think it's the first of the year.
Yeah, where inland wetlands is the, is one of the few commissions that do it in December.
December, right. But I, planning, I believe is January.
Oh, it was January.
Okay.
Donning used to do it in the summer.
Yeah, I thought we did it in December last year.
But yeah, because you did it right after the election.
Yeah.
For the new members.
So we can double check it and at least put it on the agenda. We can discuss nominations and leave it at that if we get it till January, whatever the commission's leisure.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, sounds like a good plan. Let's put it on the agenda and we'll discuss it next time. Any further discussion about adjourning? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move to vote. Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Rich Gordon.
Aye.
Nicole Davison.
Aye.
Mary Salvatore.
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. Let the record show we are adjourning at 9:20, no, I'm sorry, 9:17. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye.
Bye.